I will call this work session of the mayor and council to order. As has been the custom for me and this council, we are going to move through this as expeditiously as we can, but we have a healthy agenda today. I just want to remind everyone that at the end of the work session today, there'll be an opportunity for public comments. Did we put a sheet out for signup? Okay. So if you want to make public comments, make sure you've put your name on that signup sheet. And when I go through that list, if there are still others, I'll try to accommodate those. Okay. So let's go ahead. I want to, I want to make a couple of changes to this work session agenda first. We are going to strike E1, the approval for the Paycom payroll system. This is a request from Human Resources because there were some legal issues that we have not been able to resolve at this time. So we will not consider that today nor on Tuesday. We may not consider this vendor at all. And then also we'll strike I1, which is the two-year extension to the website hosting agreement. This is a request from the city clerk, and this is because we will continue with the agreement that we have for now, instead of entered into a new two-year agreement. Okay. With that, we will start the agenda. Community Development, Bobby Elliott, item number one, VA 02-20, variance application for international component repair. I guess Ron will present that. Good afternoon, Ron. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. There is, it's a request for two variances at this property. This is on the corner of West Industrial Court and Highway 101. The first variance is for a front yard setback. The requirement is 25 feet from a local road, which would be West Industrial Court, and the applicant is requesting five feet. And the second variance would be for, to construct multiple principal structures on the same lot. The zoning ordinance requires or permits up to one principal structure. They want four. Their business is expanding on this same lot, and they would like to stay in town. So it has prompted this application.
What is the staff position on this? Did this go to planning and zoning?
No. It's a, being that it's a variance request, it only comes to the city council.
Okay. What is the staff position?
For denial because of the number of variances that they're requesting, the two variances, and how extreme that those, those variances are. One principal building versus four is a pretty big jump, and the setback of not, not meaning the 25 feet, you're, really, they're asking for 20 feet additional room than what the ordinance requires. So that's, that's a pretty long distance.
Council, do you have any questions?
No, I agree with that five-foot difference, that 20-foot difference is a big precedence to set.
If their business is expanding, they could possibly expand the existing building? Would that require a variance if they expanded the existing building?
It, it would not. Both of these variances would actually go away if it was just one giant building.
Say again? Both of them would go away if what?
Both of these variances would not be necessary if they were to expand just their existing building that they have, being that it's only one structure and that their current structure that they have is already five feet to the property line. But if they were to expand in line with that, instead of protruding more, then neither of these variances would be necessary.
Is this the one that at one time needed a variance to go into the buffer to the stream?
That is correct, yes.
And I believe ours is 75, but the state is lower. The state is 50.
Fifty, or 25, excuse me.
25. Okay. So we're 50 feet more. Do they have the option of going that way instead of forward?
That, they don't because they, they would encroach into that stream buffer, right? If you were to look at the, the site plan, it's very, very close to the 75-foot line where they're, the new building, one of the new buildings would be located, but they can't move any more west into that property that they purchased next to them that has the stream. So what they're proposing is if these two variances were approved, then they won't need those variances that the council approved previously for the stream buffer, and they're willing to relinquish that.
The stream buffer, though, it is 75 for us, but it's 25 for the state. I'm not sure why ours is so much larger than the state. I still need to be convinced why we need a lot more than what the state requires. But, okay, so even if we went by state requirements, it's not something where they could go that direction?
Uh...
With any type of variance that way?
If they were to go anymore to the west in this property, they would, they would need variances. So they already have, they've already secured those variances. So in order to not cause a larger issue here with them having three variance approvals, essentially, two from this application, one from the last, they're willing to relinquish the stream buffer variances.
Understood that.
Ron, okay. So why did they change the plan from the June 2019 plan, when, when we gave them the variances for the stream buffer, to this plan to where they're not using those stream buffer variances, and they're asking for these additional variances? What's the, what was the impetus here?
I, I can't speak indefinitely, indefinitely about that. They, they have not specified why to me. They, they come in with a separate plan altogether. There was, in the, in the original applic, they submitted an application to us in January, which never reached the city council, to where they, they wanted to expand even further into the buffers, and I believe there were some other, other things as well, and they ended up pulling that application. So I think it's really just an engineering and site design changes that they've had to make. It could be a capacity issue with the, with the buildings that they came with previously. There's, there could be a number of different issues, but it hasn't been specified to me. I don't know if Bobby has a, any insight into that.
Let, let me ask a question. Avery, does this require a public hearing, and should the applicant be present to give their position here? That was my next question.
It will require a public hearing at the board's meeting before the board, or the council votes on it.
So we can't take this up today, anyway?
That's correct.
Let me say, I guess they will be, and they've been invited to be at the meeting on Tuesday, is that correct?
That is correct.
So what I would suggest is that when the city adopted whatever regulations it adopted that increased this buffer by 50 additional feet, there must have been good reason for doing that. And to, to vary that, I think, requires some substantial reasoning on the part of the applicant. We, we do this for a reason. We come up with these policies for a reason. We don't second-guess them every time we bring it back, but they do need to come here and make the case. So please make sure that they're invited, and we won't take this up today. This will move to Tuesday. Thank you, Ron. Unless anybody has any more questions? You want to get something else in?
No.
Just that I think it's good every now and then to look at things we've done in the past. People overturn and amend legislation all the time and tweak it. It's always good to review, see if what you did in the past is still a good thing to stick with.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Are you picking up also the revision to the alcoholic beverage ordinance?
That is correct, yeah.
All right. Let's go.
All right. So the, we, the staff was approached by a hotel in town that is interested in distributing alcohol to their guests only for overnight stays and as a, essentially as a performance reward for staying with them. So there is, they've identified a specific market here within Villarica that, that they would like to capitalize on, a certain, a certain clientele, and they believe that the gifting or the distribution of malt beverages specifically would be able to help them capture that market. So this revision, and you have a clean copy and a bold and underlined a copy, it's to basically set new licensing for, to make that possible, and there's some supplementary regulations in there as well to help steer or regulate those, this activity.
All right. So Avery, does this require a public hearing?
No, it will not require a public hearing.
Okay. All right. Council, do you have any questions?
What is the rationale behind 50 rooms?
So the rationale was to, we, we have a, a great diversity of the types of hotels in Villarica, and there's a lot of motels in Villarica. And to, in order to corner this, a specific type of hotel, or, or just the standard ones that we see on Highway 61, for example, we didn't want to include hotels, like, for example, the Conal Lodge is one of them that would be excluded from this. Some of them, mainly the hotels that have 50 rooms or more are, which is a criteria for this, and that would apply to this, they have interior doorways into each of the rooms. A lot of our motels don't have that, and we didn't want to expand this ordinance to those types of establishments.
So why didn't we specify interior doorways to rooms instead of a room count?
We specified both in the definition for hotel.
I didn't recall seeing both specifications. Do they both exist?
They do.
Okay. Then I think that's, that, that helps with that. Anybody else? If this doesn't require a public hearing, if, do I have any objections to placing this on the consent agenda? All right. That item will be placed on the consent agenda. All right. Ron, will you be moving on to? Will you be moving on to CU 0120 special use permit, conditional use permit for a truck stop with convenience store and accessory truck and RV parking?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on just a second. Yes.
When you were talking about the consent agenda, you know I'm going to vote no, so you probably have to put that on there.
Because she votes no. She voted to vote against the entire consent agenda.
Yeah, that would need to be a separate vote.
Okay. So, so far, I have nothing on the consent agenda. Y'all take that off.
This is only a second item.
All right. Go ahead.
All right. So this application is for a special exception for a truck stop and convenience store with accessory truck parking. So the terminology that I just used, "special exception," is one that is in our new zoning ordinance. I reviewed this application to the new zoning ordinance, so it is, it is directly tied to the passing of that ordinance. Otherwise, we can't review this application. But the convenience store that's proposed, at least is a 12,000 square foot convenience store, this is a 10-acre property, there would be RV parking, there would be truck parking, future truck parking that they have marked on their concept plan. And as of right now, under the UDC, this is a permitted use. They voluntarily put in an application for the new zoning ordinance because they could not get full sets of engineering plans done in time that was proposed for this zoning ordinance to be passed. That would take a far longer time, so they went ahead and preemptively submitted an application under the new zoning ordinance.
So we can't do anything with this item, anyway, because we don't, we have not yet passed the new zoning ordinance, so...
Right.
Council, do you have any questions?
This also requires a public hearing, though, correct, Avery?
That's correct.
So again, I'm going to say this again, when it requires a public hearing, I want to see that on the agenda. Every one of these items should have had a public hearing written down on here.
You want that on the work session agenda?
Yeah, because I, otherwise, I don't know that, yeah.
So that you know you can put it on?
Right. So I can move on. But really...
Since this one can't go into effect, even if we pass it, until after we pass J1, the new zoning ordinance...
Yeah, I just want to know if anybody has any questions.
Shouldn't this one come after?
Yes.
Can we flip them and put...
This needs to come after the adoption of the zoning ordinance.
Right. You can't do anything with it.
Right. So we need to move it.
We will.
So this will be sitting right on the new podcast.
So we'll move this one, reorder this one for the, the actual agenda. All right. Okay. But does anybody have any questions on this, so that we can cut the time on Tuesday? All right. So we're going to move on, then, to number four. Approval, thank you, Ron, approval of the final plat for the falls at Mirror Lake Phase Two. Bobby Elliott. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item does not require a public hearing.
Thank you.
This is the second phase of the falls at Mirror Lake. Originally, the first phase was platted in 2007. At that time, it's, it's zone PUD, and the zoning densities, et cetera, et cetera, were all set based on that original zoning. The second phase has 32 lots. My inspector and I have inspected all the construction on the streets. All the public infrastructure's been looked at and approved. All requirements concerning this plat, including maintenance bonds, streetlight fees, et cetera, et cetera, have all been taken care of. We, we recommend approval of this plat.
Council, do you have any questions? All right. There are no questions. I'm familiar with this one as well, and staff's recommendation is approval, so I will, if there are no objections, I will put this on the consent agenda.
No objection.
No objection.
No objection.
Anything?
Okay. All right. So that'll be our first item on the consent agenda. All right, Bobby. 2019-2020 paving contract award. This should excite a lot of folks.
Mayor, this is a big one. It's, it's the biggest bid amount that I've done in my career, believe it or not. We, we combined 2019 and 2020 paving. We did that because we had a lot of old water service, alongside water services on a lot of these streets that needed to be replaced prior to paving. And there's nothing worse than put a fresh coat of paving down, and then go out a week later and cut a hole in the street to fix a water leak. That just doesn't go over very well with, with anybody.
With anybody.
In your packet, I've included everything. You've got the original set of bid documents that, that has all the specifications, contracts, all required forms. It's got a street map along with a street list. It's got quantities of everything. We had five bidders ranging from CW Matthews at $2,426,504.06 to the low bid of Baldwin Paving Company at $2,66,484 even. I'm familiar with Baldwin. I've worked with them at a different job on several occasions. This is going to be funded from several different sources, as indicated on my cover sheet. We've even got some, some subdivisions that failed in the downturn, where bonds were posted but lost when banks went under. We've collected dollars from builders per lot to go toward paving, topping these streets. This is, we, we really need to do this. It's very important. And there's, there's 37 streets on this list, and they go from industrial park roads to fixes in at least two subdivisions that were finally topped, but we've got some serious issues in them. Local streets are included, just about the whole gambit that we have.
Bobby, when would this paving start?
We, if approved by council on Tuesday night, it'll take us approximately 30 days to get the contracts in order and in place. A notice to proceed will be issued, and hopefully, we can get the paving company to begin work within 10 days of that notice to proceed issuing.
Okay.
So probably the first or second week in September.
Would there be a gap due to weather, when we might slow down or put off some of it until the spring, or do we think we can get this done before that?
We have been very apprehensive about how late we are getting this thing cranked out. In fact, one of the bidders asked me the question, you know, it's going to be, it could get cumbersome in November and December if we don't get all this stuff done. I plan to meet with, if approved, the low bidder and make that discussion, and if we need to, we will adjust that contract, the length of this contract, based on that, because I don't want to penalize them if, if, if we get into below 55-degree weather, and they can't pave at all in November, December.
Right.
We can't count those days against them if it doesn't work.
I understand that, and I, and I appreciate that.
We, we will make concessions on that as we move forward.
I would just say, and I don't, I'm sure this council's already gone through this packet, but for the public, this is a lot of roads. There is a lot of road that will be covered here. This is a project that has been long in the works, and it took us a while to get to a dollar amount that we could reach out to certain quality contractors to make these bids, so I'm glad to get to this point. Council, do you have any questions for Bobby?
Yes, I got one.
Go ahead.
Our city manager is very specific about not having to dig up these roads after we pave them. Are we going to stay ahead of the game on any utilities?
Sir, we, every item on this list, the utilities have been adjusted.
Okay. All, all...
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
That's a big part of the delay.
I didn't dare, I didn't dare go, I didn't dare go forward without doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. We don't want to waste any more money.
Yeah, just two comments. I knew we had been so pleased with, you know, we've had bad work in the past, right?
I understand.
But we were so pleased last time with CW Matthews, but I did see a significant difference in the price. So you feel very comfortable with Baldwin?
Yes, ma'am. I've got a great relationship with him as well, from a previous job. They, they, they are welcome. All of these bidders had to be Georgia DOT pre-certified. Baldwin has done a ton of work in Cobb and all over the metro area.
Okay. And the only other thing is, I almost called you to ask you for the street list, but I think I finally found it in that 72-page document. If there's any way we could have something that just has the streets, I'm sure, not just us, but probably there's a lot of people that are curious as to, is my street getting done? What streets? It'd be nice.
I can email you that list.
Great.
All of y'all that list. I, I know Mr. Mayor made the comment last time that he wanted to see everything, and I gave you everything, so...
That's okay.
And sometimes, to be fair, I've already seen it in some pre-meeting, and so sometimes I, you know, I don't have to fight about that. But, okay, this is worthwhile. Did you have another question? Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Did you, you said there was a map, too? I didn't see that, though. I mean, it's fine, but I didn't see that. Can you just email that? I may have missed that, I thought.
Yeah, it's, it...
The map's a little harder to read.
You'll blink.
Okay. Because I found the, the street list.
Believe it or not, the map, I did the map by hand.
Okay.
With not colored crayons, but colored ink pens. And it doesn't, it doesn't scan very well.
Okay. I think, well, well, Michael just told me he did see it in here, so I'll find it.
If you need a better copy, I've got a, I've got a larger one I can give you that'll look better, if you need it.
Okay. I'll take a look. Thank you, sir.
Okay. If there are no objections, I'll place this item on the consent agenda.
No objection.
No objection.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bobby. All right. We will move on to B, governing body, discussion of the smoke-free air ordinance. So let me just preface this. I'm not sure if we have any, any motions or anything in here, so let me say this. We're going to have some discussion about this, and if we decide to do anything that requires moving this to the agenda on Tuesday, we'll do that. Councilwoman McPherson requested that this be placed on the agenda, and, and I did that back in, I think, July, maybe June, I can't remember. Let, let me tell you how we get here. There's probably a lot of concern. We're all in this room today, most, wearing a face mask. Most people are. And I had a lady call me back in May, and she said that she had been waiting out in front of the Home Depot because they were limiting capacity due to social distancing. And she was six feet away, and they were in a line out, out front, and a gentleman, she, she had her child in a stroller, and a gentleman was in front of her, and he lit up his cigarette there and just proceeded to smoke it while blowing the smoke, obviously, just wherever it went. He wasn't doing it intentionally, she didn't say that. But he got all over her and her kid, and she, he then flicked it onto the ground and just let it sit there and burn, and then he proceeded on into the store. But her question to me was, is there anything you can do about that? And I told her that I wasn't real sure what I could do about it. But I did contact the city attorney, and I said, would you take a look at smoke-free ordinances in and around our area and find something that maybe I could support? He said, well, Mr. Mayor, there's already one on the books. And I had no idea. So he sent me a copy of it. I took a look at it. I reviewed it. And to be honest with you, I thought it was probably the most comprehensive ordinance that I had ever seen out of the city of Villarica. It really did not seem like anybody had had that kind of forethought. But it was the law, and it was on the books. So I issued a memorandum to the city manager, the community development director, and the chief of police, and asked that that ordinance be enforced. Subsequently to that, there were a number of businesses that were met with, and I think maybe two raised an objection to the ordinance. So Councilwoman McPherson came to a meeting and asked that we place it on this agenda for discussion, and I don't really know what she wants to do with it, but I will now turn it over to her for some discussion.
Okay. Well... Sorry. There's a couple of things that are problematic with the ordinance itself, and let me say this. I don't smoke, I don't like smoke, and I don't go to places where there is cigarette or cigar smoke. But it is a legal activity that people can choose to do in certain environments where it's allowed. We have a couple establishments, three, in Villarica that are, limit their customer base and everything to 21 years and up. And you're not, according to state law, you're not allowed to have smoking in restaurants that, at 18, they still say 18, I believe, either work in there or be in a place that allows it. But there's another thing that I think is extremely problematic with this ordinance because of how it ended up being an ordinance, which was strictly by accident. So even if you're for it, if you like this ordinance, you want to have this ordinance, I would still contend that it should be repealed and actually voted on by a council, because no council looked at this ordinance and said, we want to do this. It was tabled by the council back in 2012, and somehow, through some technical clerical whatever glitch, I don't know what happened, it got put into our ordinances without any council saying, we want to do this. And so when we adopted our entire package of ordinances for the whole city, and it happened to be in there somehow, and put it on municode altogether, our digital, digital, there we go, ordinances all online to be updated, it got adopted in a package. So I thought that was problematic, and I thought it's only proper that we actually vote on it and say, yes, we want this, let's vote it in if that's what we want. This particular ordinance not only outlaws smoking in, say, that 21-year and up area, and I'm kind of a freedom believer, I believe it's, if it's a legal activity, and they want to do it in the four walls of their establishment, and they cater to those people, why is government sticking its tentacles in and telling people what to do and not to do? But on top of that, our ordinance also does not allow it in private clubs. So if you had a group of guys that have their own private membership club, and they like to smoke their cigars and play cards, we're telling them, you can't do that. That's illegal in the city of Villarica. If we ever wanted to have, I mean, not want to have necessarily, but if a cigar bar wanted to open here, like they have on their main street in Rome, that would be illegal under this ordinance. And so I like, I like a lot of the things in the state law. There's something that would, in our own ordinance, there's one that, there's one part of it that provides for, if you're in a service line, so if you're waiting for tickets at a... so if you're waiting for tickets at a movie, a theater, uh, waiting to go into store, for whatever service you would be in a line for, uh, smoking is not allowed. I did not see that in the state regulations. And, um, only got to work a little bit with legal on this. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell from my standpoint. I have talked to a few other council people, tried to get an idea on where they are and how they feel about it.
Okay, let me address, because I, I wasn't going to go down that road about how this became a law, but let me address that just for a moment. So we don't have the best record-keeping in Villareca. We never really have. But when I sent out this memo, suddenly some council member remembered, oh, I don't think we ever passed that. So we went back and dug up the minutes, and indeed, what we were able to find was that when it came up in 2012, it was tabled. It is the responsibility of the mayor and the council to bring these items back up for a vote up or down. Number one. Number two, when it did show up in municode in 2016, the council had an opportunity to review all of the ordinances and had a duty to review all the ordinances. They then passed it. Now, if there's a suggestion that, hey, we didn't read them all, it's not really my issue, number one. But number two, that's not what happened. Because in June of 2016, after they had passed municode, they called a special-called meeting to discuss this ordinance particularly, this specific ordinance. And in that meeting, guess what they did? They tabled it. Why? Because they could not agree to do anything else with it. So that's really what happened, and that's how it became a law, and that's why it's still a law today. So I don't support really making much of a change here. I had originally thought that I might be open to some changes, but I'm not sure how that would fit in, because there's no question that when the state, who has more than 520 cities, create a law, they anticipate that cities, particularly given their size, will have more restrictive restrictions within those laws. They can't create a law at the state level that, that necessarily applies to a city of 25 people. We have cities in the state of Georgia with 25 people in it. So if you were to have a law that's as restrictive as ours at the state level, you would actually probably cut out a business that may be a single business in a, in a town. So it was always anticipated. In fact, more than 100 cities in Georgia have this same ordinance as we've gone and looked at. So I don't, I don't, uh, support making any changes to it, but I am open to a discussion amongst the council. Does anybody else want to comment? Okay, if there are no additional comments, is there any proposal for the Tuesday agenda?
No comments from any other council members?
Well, I, for one, would, would like to see it voted on. Um, I really think if it's been tabled a couple of times, that doesn't qualify as an approval. Now, if you're saying all the council members should have read all the municode.
Yes, sir.
And talked about it, um, I don't think that ever happens. If, if you ever read through that, you couldn't stay awake long enough.
But it did come up specifically in its own meeting.
And got tabled.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, once again. So it never has been voted on.
I'd still like, I'd still like an opportunity just to read through the state code versus it. I just haven't had a chance to do that. So.
So, uh, could, what have we been provided with so far? Because I know we didn't have the state code. I have a copy of ours. I have a hard copy of ours.
It's also in your, in your packet.
Yeah, after, after talking to at least a few council people who seem to be open to repeal, but I think we all need to look at it, I'd like to at least have on the agenda for Tuesday that we, prior to Tuesday, that we review the state regulations and the, our own ordinance, if you haven't looked at it or want to read it again, and that we put up for a vote either a repeal or, um, substitute with the state language. Or if you want to tweak something, that, that'd be a little bit more involved, because we, we take the state language and add to it. And being that I've had very little communication with legal for the city because of the situation, I talked a little bit with Stacy. I think I emailed with you, Avery. Might need a little guidance on how to go down that road. But I'd like to, uh, I think Councilman Carter has mentioned that at the very least, we should vote on it. And you can't vote on it if you don't repeal it unless you're going to vote on something else.
My contention is that the city council voted on the municode. They voted on a package of ordinances and approved it. So repeal is not appropriate. Now, if there's a specific portion of the ordinance that needs to be looked at again, then there should be a specific proposal made to the city council to look at that specific item.
So the way we're going to get this to Tuesday is that there is going to be some type of a motion here, and there's going to be a consensus of at least three council members to get it onto the Tuesday agenda. So do you have something, is it repeal? Is that what you want to put on there? Because we could do that. And if you can get three votes to put it on that agenda, we'll do that. If it's some other modification, I think you could throw that out there and see if that could get to the.
Well, and that's the reason for the whole discussion here, because we're, we're never together, except in this situation to have a meeting.
That's right, because that's what the law requires.
And for instance, if I were to look at the current ordinance and just want to tweak it, much of it is a restatement that's already covered by state law, or it's not even a problem. So you're making a law for something you don't have a problem with, like having smoking in conference centers and that sort of thing. But if I were to pinpoint just a few items in the current one, my biggest issue would, would be leave the 21-year, 21-year-and-up places alone, and leave private clubs alone.
So are you suggesting that as something to move to Tuesday?
Is this an amendment to the, to the current one?
It would be an amendment to the current one, but I had some suggestions by others that they thought, uh, it would be better just to adopt the state language. And so that's why I'm looking to see what we have a consensus on here, because I've had two people tell me repeal, go with the state language.
Yeah, and I will, I will say that I was one of those that, again, I haven't looked at the state. I haven't had a chance to review it yet. Uh, because you guys know why. But I would like to look at the state language, but I've also been informed of some particular situations that the state language may not address, like for, for example, smoking on public sidewalks. And, and I would like to see how that service line, um, information may affect that. So I'm just not, I mean, I'm glad we're having this discussion right now. I'm not exactly ready to, to have vote on a proposal, per se. Um, maybe I will, I, I hope, you know, that I'm feeling better. Then I'll, I'll do that by Tuesday night. Plus, I'm also looking at the statute here. It's uh, OCGA 31-12A-1 subsequent, so. Right, right. So I'm looking at it, you know, I've found it, to put it that way. So.
Could, could we, could we ask them to come up with an amendment to the current version that would allow clubs to decide, you know, private clubs to decide for themselves about smoking inside their club?
Private clubs?
Yes.
Not on a city sidewalk?
Right.
Not in the downtown overlay?
Correct. It, but private clubs could make their own decisions. I think that's the sticking point is, you've got businesses that, um.
But the 21 and up are not private clubs. They're just 21 and up businesses. They're public businesses. But they only cater to that, they cater to that age and to people who prefer to go somewhere.
So the problem here is that the businesses aren't allowed to have smoking in, even as a private business, the way I see it.
That's right.
That seems to be the problem, sticking point.
Also, just real quickly, the one thing that I thought might be helpful that's in our ordinance that I did not find in the state regulation was somebody waiting in the line of service. Um, you know, if people were just considerate and polite, that wouldn't be an issue, right? People would think, hey, I shouldn't stand in line with people standing right around me with their kids and everything else and start smoking, but.
Would it be fair to say that, um, maybe we could see if there's, if there's at least three votes here to put this on the Tuesday agenda, but during that time, a motion could be worked out? Possibly. I, I don't know what to say, because it's, I thought it was repeal, and if it was repeal, we would see if we can move that to the agenda. And if it's some other amendment, I didn't know that, then we could do that. I mean, do you want to, what do you want?
Yeah.
What is your pleasure?
Repeal would have been the furthest that we would have gone, right? The furthest. But nobody knew for sure where we wanted to be in between allowing certain things or going all the way to repeal and just adopting what's in the state language. And that's what we're trying to do here. So.
I guess I, you know, not to, to be coy, but I really would have wanted a proposal in here.
Okay, I would like to see them come up with an, an amendment to the current one that allows a business, a private business, to decide for themselves whether they will allow smoking within the business. Right now, this one does not allow that. They won't, they can't make that decision.
And it could only be certain types of businesses, because the state already, and they trump us, already outlaws it in a lot of places, you know, retail and all that. So it's not just any private business. We're talking, I think, really just restaurants that cater to 18 and up or 21 and up. We don't have, ours are only 21 and up in Villareca.
So, but essentially, though, if you're looking at that, what you're talking about is a repeal, because that's essentially the sticking point of this particular ordinance, the city ordinance, is allowing a business to decide on its own within the state guidelines, whether they could have a.
Within the business. But you want to keep it illegal on the sidewalk, because that's in the public. So I think an amendment to this one would be more sensible, that allows the business owner to make the decision, as long as they tell the people that are coming in that this is a smoking environment, and doesn't let the smoke come outside the business.
Okay, so you are suggesting that there be, uh, an amendment prepared for Tuesday that would allow a business to decide on its own within the state regulations about whether or not it has smoking?
That makes more sense to me.
Tom, are you hearing that? Do I have three, uh, in favor of, of putting that onto, um, the agenda for Tuesday?
I'm fine with that.
I got.
Yeah, okay, good morning.
Two, three. All right. Can you prepare that for us, Tom? Thank you. All right, let's move on. C, Parks, Recreation and Leisure Services. We still have the old director on there. Who's doing that today? Is that you, Tom? No. Oh, it's the Library Digital Sign Replacement. Come on up, Yvette.
Good afternoon. It has been quite a while since the sign has been operational. And we've tried to replace it, fix it. We've gone back to see if we can get the warranty to cover it, and the company that covered it is defunct. So we have to replace the sign entirely. Um, the lowest one was from Denice signage, and they came in at about 21,000. And then they did some original repair work for us, and said, they said that would go towards the final cost. Um, the best part about this is that it is with, um, Samsung, not Samsung. Let's see, uh, yeah, Samsung. So the warranty would pretty much be more solid than the prior signage that we had. The digital display is 10 millimeter, so it's very distinct on how, how clear it's going to be. And we would like to possibly move forward with it, because it's going to take quite some time for it to be fully processed. It takes about 14, 14 or so weeks.
So this is a $20,918.50 uh, cost for this digital sign replacement, and it is not a budgeted item, I guess, because we didn't anticipate that we'd be replacing that sign within two years. I haven't noticed that that sign has been down. I apologize. I haven't been over that, over that way that much. So you got Denice signage doing it. Did you get? How many bids do you, did you get? I'm, I'm having problems seeing my screen.
We had, um, Sign Works Pro that gave us a bid of 22,815. And Extreme Images of Douglasville, they gave us 29,101,32.
Okay.
Um, we did, um, one of the board members is also, one of the library advisory board members is also pricing signs for West Georgia Regional, and she said that that is within the range for what we were looking for, because they're pricing signs for West Georgia as well.
So did, what did we do? Is this the first time this happened? Do we know what the cause is?
The cause is the software went bad. The company's no longer operating. They were out of California, and so.
The sign's been there for two years.
That was my question. I was trying to remember. The years seem to fly, but how old is that sign?
Two.
Well, we opened the library in February of 17, so.
It always, it's always usually longer than I think it is, but, okay, so.
All right, counsel, you got any questions?
Just that, how, it sounds like at least you're going with a company that's more stable. Did you say how we're paying for it?
It's going to come from some of the budgeted items that we currently have. We're going to shift some funds from different accounts so that we can cover it, because some things we didn't use this year because of COVID. So we have additional funds that we can shift to cover that.
All right, let's hear from Sarah just for a moment. She's our money lady, so.
She answered the question very well. Yes, because they've had savings this year with the library being closed for a while because of COVID. Um, she was able to move the money from, within the department to cover this.
So it's department money?
Yes, so it's from the general fund, um, operating budget.
And so we shouldn't be replacing another sign in two to three years?
No.
Yeah, and, and Denice is actually a solid company. They've been around for a long time. I'm assuming they're warranting.
For five years.
Five years? Parts and labor?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Avery, uh, have you had a chance to review the terms and conditions on that? On the proposal?
I have not looked at that one.
It looks pretty standard, but.
If there are no objections, I'll put this on the consent agenda.
Pending his review of the proposal, yes.
Yep, we'll look at it before.
Well, it's standard, yeah. Just make sure you run it by Avery. But we'll go ahead and move forward with it. Okay, we're going to move on to Economic Development, D1. Uh, Janet Chumley, 2020 Gold Rush Summer Concert Headlining Entertainment, Velcro Pygmies, Friday, September the 11th, 2020. And Ms. Marchman has a request that we change, uh, the date. So we want to keep the Friday, but she don't want it to be September the 11th.
I did not say this.
Go ahead. She's just been over there quiet. All right, go ahead.
So I came to you guys in, uh, March for approval of our events for the year, and, uh, obviously COVID came and kind of changed things around for us. So we met as a Main Street Board. Some of our committees got together, and my staff got together and talked about how we can uh, add a summer concert in and also attach it to the Gold Rush Festival. As you guys know, the Gold Rush Festival is quite the day for staff and for everybody. It's a 6:00 AM start for staff, and then we don't leave till after midnight. So with COVID, um, that didn't make sense to us, um, how we could break the day down. So I reached out to the Pygmies and said, hey, you know, would you guys consider doing a Friday night concert and add it as a Gold Rush Festival concert? And then us move forward with Gold Rush on Saturday as a shorter day. So this is a presentation to you guys to switch the original date of the concert for Gold Rush and do it Friday, um, September 11th, instead of Saturday evening, September the 12th. And the Pygmies, we have an updated contract for them, and where they agreed to switch days.
Okay. And I, and I remember we had talked about this, because we had some discussion about whether we were even going to move forward. So what we've done is tried to break this into two days and, and try to do the best we can, because I really, since I was a kid, we've done this, and I really didn't want to, to cancel this. We've canceled enough, I think, this year. So, um, counsel, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, just real quick, um, they referenced in their, I'm trying to see if it's in the contract. Um, because I didn't even see pizza in their rider this time, but it's, it's. Because I didn't even see pizza in their rider this time, but it's, it's also says, and any additional rider. Is there any other rider that's not here?
It would be the one that I presented to you guys. Nothing's changed there.
That we already saw.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's probably where the pizza and stuff is. They usually aren't very demanding.
No.
And I think that's it, because we already talked about the date change. Oh, I was going to ask, Tom, is there anything as far as, just to know this for this situation and anything in the future, with us splitting to two days, is it a lot more costly or pretty much the same if with overtime, with having employees there on Friday and then having them there on Saturday? Or is it whichever doesn't...
I don't know if the cost changes, but the regular Gold Rush is a staff killer because it starts at five o'clock in the morning and goes till midnight.
Yeah.
So, this is, this is better from that standpoint. Still going to be hard because you're going to be up late the first night.
Late and then have to be back early.
You get to go home at, you know, by dinnertime or something the second day, so...
Okay, okay, thanks. That's all.
All right, any other questions from counsel? If there's no objections, I'm going to place that on the consent agenda.
No objection.
No objection.
Okay, let's move on to Twenty Twenty Alcohol License Agreement with the Olive Tree for Gold Rush Summer Concert, Friday, September the eleventh, twenty twenty, at the Mill Amphitheater. And I'm going to, I'm going to take a break and I'm going to leave it with Danny.
With that, um, with the concert schedule that we had previously planned, obviously with COVID, we had to change a few things. So, with that, we wanted to give Olive Tree an opportunity to have the opportunity to sell beer and wine at this summer concert. And so, Before You is a contract with them to be able to serve beer and wine Friday, September eleventh, for the summer Gold Rush concert.
Any discussion from the counsel?
This is pretty much boilerplate what we've done before.
Yes, sir.
All right, if there's no objection, that can go on the consent agenda.
No objection.
No objection.
All right, Nick. Okay, so we take that off the consent agenda. I'm sorry, Shirley, I forgot. I should know better.
You should.
We'll not put that one on. All right, let's go to D3. Proposal to hire True Green Commercial Services.
So, in February of nineteen, the former Parks Director presented you guys with a switch from True Green at the time to Peach, Peach State Care Turf Services. I wish I would have had some input on that because at the time, we didn't have, as far as my staff, as far as them doing the Mill Amphitheater, the Gateway, the Railroad Park and Pine Mountain, we did not have an issue with True Green. So, since we've made the state, switched Peach State, we have had multiple issues. And I sent you guys over in the packet several pictures of kind of some damage that was done from Peach State earlier this year. And it's hard to compare apples to apples in this particular case because of the, I did attach a proposal from True Green, the current proposal we have from Peach State, and also a proposal that we got from Arboronomics, which was quite expensive. My goal for True Green is simply to switch them back to do service at the Mill Amphitheater, the Downtown Railroad Park, Pine Mountain Golden Museum and the Gateway. And Nick and I kind of tag teamed on this. Nick has a few notes for that, if you want to come forward, Nick.
I don't know if you guys need much more proof, but I did put together some pricing. Comparing apples to apples, like Janet said, it is kind of difficult because what we have reached out to these companies for is a turf care plan from their expertise. You know, something that we have technicians and companies, you know, providing us a strong service of not only just pre-emergent, but if they see an issue, they can let us know and say, hey, we recommend this service. So, we had these three companies come out and Peach State, obviously, they've already, you know, been treating. And a lot of the, a lot of the turf that they're treating now is dying. We've had experiences where the technician that's come out sprayed the wrong chemical. I think, I mean, so it's, it's just really carelessness. I don't know if you've seen the Gateway here lately, the grounds department, they did a good job on replacing some of the dead shrubs. But it is our, our belief that the chemical and the applications that they put out killed almost forty percent of the shrubs and, and things out there. So, I don't know if you need any more proof, but I've also seen some inconsistencies on their applications. So, for an, for instance, take the Gateway. There was, last year, they were putting out forty pounds of a pre-emergent called Snapshot. This year, they doubled the price and then put out eighty pounds. So, I mean, this, when you're dealing with chemicals and things like that and you're trying to do a good job, you want to stay consistent. You want to at least know what you're doing. Doesn't seem that whoever was servicing our facilities or our tur, or areas knew what they were doing. I'm, I'm not saying anything bad about the owner or anything. It's just sometimes you get a technician that doesn't care and that seems to be the case here.
Okay, I guess the one thing that jumps out at me on this item is there were seven locations and now there's only four. What are we doing about the other three?
That would be a decision for Parks and Recreation to make. I'm only proposing that we change specifically what I oversee, which is the Mill Amphitheater, the train park up here, Pine Mountain Golden Museum, and then Nick on his end, the Gateway, which he and his staff and the grounds maintenance crew oversee that specific area.
So, you have it...
So, am I proposing to change...
For your location, but you had it coordinated on the other locations?
They're happy with Peach State.
Switching over to?
No, so they're happy with Peach State.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because some of them listed seven loca, I don't know. I had a real difficult time trying to compare because some listed only some locations, some listed all the locations that aren't under you. I don't need proof, the pictures you showed. And if you guys are out there and see it, you know, where they're burning stuff up or putting round up where, you know, it gets to plant roots and stuff like that, I'm good on that. It did say that staff reached out to different companies for bid. Do we, don't we normally advertise or what is re, when do we choose to reach out to get bids or advertise for bids?
Depends how big it is.
Okay.
Like what Bobby did was a seal bid.
Okay, so I'm just curious. Did anybody talk to Alternative Environments? That just popped in my mind only because they're a, a place in town. It could be that they don't do this or this extent. Did anybody talk to them?
I don't, did Nick, did you?
Alternative Environments, uh, in the past, have actually split companies. There is one that does just pest control and the other one that does turf care and lawn care and things like that. I haven't reached out to them because of some lack of perfect experience. I don't know, you know.
Okay.
But we, I did reach out to about five or six different companies. A couple of them never returned the phone call. There's different calibers. Some, some of them don't want to fool just four. You know, you got your, your larger commercial side, they're, I don't really know how to explain how the lack of interest.
Well, that's okay. If they don't even respond back, that shows they don't want the job. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was out there for companies to know about and maybe not just us selectively picking who we wanted to. Okay.
Wouldn't it make more sense to the, have them, one company treating all of them if we're having trouble with? Why don't we, why don't we split it up?
Because there's not a we. There's no director out there now.
Well, that's your decision. I mean, you, you're...
I could have, but I'm not out there. So, when we get somebody, then if they decide they want to change, then we'll change.
Even though we're, this other company is giving us a lot of trouble and we're switching because of that trouble we had from them?
Yeah, they, they, the previous director was happy with them.
Well, this doesn't make a whole lot of sense if we, we're switching only part of it.
Is there anybody beside the previous director to ask that would know over there if they were ple, because a lot of times it's your coaches and things that are out on the fields that have a better feel than the director does?
No, I only, I only talked to the director about it.
Okay. Well, let's make sure it at least gets looked at when we got somebody in that position.
That's you, Bill.
Well, if we get there, then...
We'll bring it back.
That's right. And, and we've talked about this before and I've seen the, and, I mean, it just doesn't seem that, I understand exactly what they're saying. I mean, the idea that you would double the amount of product that you put out and burn the grass, doesn't seem like you even know what you're doing. And I, I don't have any personal connection to these folks.
I think I sent like twelve pictures over to you guys.
Yeah, but my point is that if they're not doing a good job, it's exactly what they're saying. If they're not doing a good job in these areas for us, what, why would we think they're doing a good job here?
Right.
So, just make sure somebody looks at that. Okay, if there are no objections, I'll put this on the consent agenda.
Wait a minute. We're, we're still talking about using two companies and that doesn't make any sense.
That's right, but it's two different departments. So, she's making decisions for her department and somebody else may make a decision for another department.
Yeah, we'll bring that back when we get there.
When we get to it.
Yeah, please take a look at that and see if we shouldn't be switching for them.
All right, are there any objections?
No objection.
All right, let's move on to D4. Special Event Permit, Sticks Bar and Grill for Saturday, October the third.
So, the owner of Sticks and the lead singer of the Velcro Pygmies approached the police department about doing a benefit concert or fundraising concert for them to help raise money for their active shooter response vest, which also includes the external plate carriers. I don't know if you guys have ever seen the vests, but they're quite heavy and quite expensive. So, they were approached by the police department. They included me on the meeting because they want to host it at the Mill. This permit would be to allow them, Sticks Bar and Grill, to actually serve alcohol at this fundraising event, which would be Saturday, October the third, twenty twenty.
I believe it was still just bar, uh, beer and wine, that wasn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
But is that part of this, because I don't see that here on the agenda. It doesn't discuss the, the beer and wine. But is that what we're wanting to do?
Yes, sir. It says, staff recommends that Sticks Bar and Grill...
Well, that's the cover sheet. I'm looking at the agenda.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so we can't put this on the consent agenda anyway, but I am familiar with it. And originally, we had talked about another location, but this seemed to be a better fit for all of us. And that's one of the reasons why we got on board with this one. So, I support this, but I don't think we can put it on the consent agenda because
Right.
uh, we can't get a unanimous vote here today, which is perfectly fine. Does anybody else have any questions, though?
None.
I, I seem to remember a requirement to have a catering license. Sticks has a catering license?
Whatever, I don't, I'm not sure if they have a catering license or not. They did go through Niree and she, they went through the permitting process and it got approved.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Nope.
All right, then we will move this to the, to Tuesday, Tuesday night.
Right.
Okay, let's, let's get this last one here. Additional Lease Agreement Between the City of Villarica and Norfolk Southern.
So, this is an additional lease agreement between the City of Villarica and Norfolk Southern to be able to, in the amount of one thousand eighty dollars, to be able to place a Gateway sign, which we've been trying to get Gateway signs since the original RSVP plan in two thousand sixteen. I'm sure Ms. Shirley remembers that. This was approved by the DDA several years ago. And in order for us to move forward with putting a Gateway sign on their property, we had to get permission from them and then agree to this additional one thousand eighty dollars to be able to put the Gateway sign on the corner of the three-way stop in State Highway one oh one. And this would allow us to do that.
You just got to love Norfolk Southern. At least they signed it. We maintain all that and they charge us to rent everything.
Well, we've been working on these for a while and I'm, I'm just glad to see more of them getting agreed to. How, how many more do we have outstanding?
We have one that's at the Triangle. That's going to be across from the new Bain Dental Group. And then we also have one from the Westside Baptist Church. Unfortunately, the timing of that happened where the, they were issued a, what's it called?
Citation.
Citation for a bush that went in the right of way. That was, that citation was issued on Wednesday. They were to vote on it that Sunday. Obviously, they held off on the vote. So, the bush has since been removed by the city. This is an older congregation that requires all of them to approve the Gateway sign. So, once they reconvene church services, they will take a vote on that.
I'm working on the V. I've been told I might be able to get an answer this month. We'll see. I'm trying.
You can't make it up.
Oh, my God. All right, um, if there are no objections, I'll put this on the consent agenda.
No objection.
All right, we're skipping, uh, thank you, Janet. We are skipping E1 and let's go on to Pete. Utilities, Emergency, Emergency Replacement of Number Two Influent Pump West Drive, pump drive at West Plant for nine thousand eight oh two thirty-seven to PRB Electronics, Inc. Go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel. I'd also like to make a correction on number, item number three. That, that should be an emergency repair, not emergency purchase for that item.
Okay.
Also, I found that these are out of sequence in, in terms of how the events happen with these. So, hopefully, I won't confuse everybody by going backwards.
Well, you're going to confuse everybody anyway because we don't know enough about these drives.
Okay, so, the emergency replacement of the, it's a variable speed pump drive that controls the operation of the pump. And on July thirteenth, we got an alarm and scared, scated that the Number Two Influent Pump was showing a short circuit on the drive unit. When we pulled the pump out of the well, it appeared that the mounting bracket holding the motor cable, and this cable's about three hundred pounds, fatigued and straightened out, allowing the, the cable to drop below the pump. It's a chopper pump, so it's got blades that are designed to chop solids when it, when it pulls that material up into the pump. So, when it pulled that three-phase power line into that, that pump, it shorted out the motor of the pump and then the back feed from that short circuit through a high amp load to the drive unit that's in the electrical panel in a building. And that's what, that's what caused that fail. We had, um, PRB Electronics came out and did the work for us in replacing that unit. And staff is recommending the replacement of the Number Two Influent Pump drive in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and two dollars and thirty-seven cents to PRB Electronics Incorporated.
Now, you've already made this replacement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we are just confirming this.
Is this a unique situation on, on this pump setup or is any others around the city like this?
I can't say that it's a, a unique setup for the type of pumps that are there. These are Von chopper pumps and the way that they were designed for the plant and situated in the wet well is pretty standard in the industry.
I would hate for this to occur somewhere else and us not look into it before it happens, so...
Well, I mean, when, when this, when this fatigued, I don't think that anyone would, could have foreseen that this actually failing like it did.
But we have one now, one indication that this can happen.
Yes, sir.
Anything else like that out there that can do same thing?
It's possible. We, we think all of this was attributed to high flows that we experienced that came into the, the wet well. We had high wet well conditions at the time. We also get a good bit of debris that comes in during that time because there's no bar screen that was designed to keep those objects out of the wet well. So, that's something that I'm sure I'll be coming back to to try to refit that particular wet well structure to keep that kind of material out of there as well and reinforce the brackets. We've gone back and put stainless steel sleeves that kind of look like Chinese handcuffs. They're, they're on these cables that kind of prevent flexing and stretching. And, and we're going back and reassessing the heftiness of these plates and the hooks that these things are mounted on.
Okay.
Okay, so you say these are out of order. Are you saying that number three should be where number two is?
No, I should have started with three and then two and then finished with one. But I'll just continue where I'm at.
Well, that's fine, but let me just ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
If I'm looking at number three, you did a repair of the Number Three Influent Pump. And the repair was twenty-two thousand dollars, but the replacement for the Number Two was ninety-eight hundred.
Correct. Well, ninety-eight hundred is for the drive unit.
Okay.
The pump itself, which is the Number Two item I'm going to speak to.
All right, go ahead. Go in the order you want to.
Well, we'll just stay with, with it the way we are at now, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Okay. So, that was the staff recommendation for the pump drive unit.
Okay, so I'll, if there are no objections, I'll put that on the consent agenda?
None.
I know what you're waiting on. All right, go.
Okay, number two is... Okay, number two is the emergency replacement of the number two influent pump itself, pump and motor. And as I described earlier, when that three-phase cable got sucked up into the pump and shorted it out, it shorted the motor out. And we also had some problems with the chopper inside the bowl of the pump itself. So all of that stuff, it was just shot and we needed to do a replacement. The staff is recommending the replacement of the number two influent pump in the amount of $25,865 to Goforth Williamson Incorporated.
This has already been done, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, any questions?
Nope.
All right, if there are no objections, I'll put that on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, number three is the emergency repair of number three influent pump. And this happened just a few days before the number two pump situation happened. We also attribute this to probably both events to the high water situation we had in the wet well. There is a seal in the connection where the power line goes in into the motor of the pump. And of course, these pumps are submerged all the time. That had worked loose and separated and it caused water intrusion into the motor. It had to be pulled and refurbished. And so it was, we did a total rebuild on that. Staff recommends the repair of the number three influent pump in the amount of $22,714.22 to PRB Electronics Incorporated.
This has already been done also.
Yes, sir.
All right, if there are no objections, I'll place that on the consent agenda.
None.
Jen.
No objection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, so on that number three item, would you change the word purchase to repairs? All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to Jim Chambers, Information Technology, G1 Dual Factor Authentication. Sounds really technical, Jim.
It's, it's something you're already used to.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is for, add an additional layer of security to access our data network in the form of dual factor authentication. Kind of like if you're familiar with your banking software, stuff like that. I don't know of any of them right now that don't require that. So it's basically that in a nutshell for here. We're gonna lock it down to about 60 users that have elevated access as far as our data goes. So we're not gonna do it across the board. That way, it knocks the cost down and also the frustration of what's going to be a lot of people using this, so.
Okay, and this is a budgeted item and the cost is $2,160?
Annually, yes.
Annually.
At $36 per license each addition.
And you're only doing 60 licenses. Are there any questions for Jim?
So this is, this, when they sign into a certain account, they'll get a message asking them to accept a text message to a phone or a government email or something like that?
Yes, or they'll just use an app and they'll just sit there and say, yes, this is me and proceed.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, I will, if there are no objections, I'll place this on the consent agenda.
No objection.
All right, thank you, Jim. Let's move on to our CFO, Finance, Sarah Andrews. Number one, 2020 Budget Amendments. Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, so we go to the exhibit A. All right, yes, these are our budget amendments for our current budget. The first one is an item that council approved at the last meeting for a Punkin Town Road Speed Study, and it's $5,810. I'm asking that the council approve to pay that out of the contingency fund. We were able to put $100,000 in contingency in the council's budget in the operating fund, general fund, and I'm asking to use some of that money to go towards this. The next item is a, it's an addition to an amendment that the council has already approved. We had more invoices come in for the city hall remodel that was done during the, while we were closed for COVID. So we need to increase that amount that we, I had originally brought to you, which I believe was about $32,000. And I'm asking to continue to use the old SLOSS. This is a 2008 SLOSS that we still have money in. So it says use of fund balance. It's use of old SLOSS funds that are still sitting there. So this would be $6,200 in addition to what you already approved. The next two items were brought to you by Pete at the last meeting. The first one, or maybe the first one was, yeah, the first one was Pete, the second one was, no, both of them were Pete. Excuse me. Okay, the first one was the Edge Road Water Project, which we've been talking about for a long time. It's $558,000 and it'll be paid for out of the Water and Sewer Fund. Again, as we've been talking about, part of the rate increases over the last three years is to be able to pay for some of these capital improvements. So it says use of fund balance because again, we have built up the fund balance in the Water and Sewer Fund in order to handle some of these projects. So that is what I'm proposing this be paid out of. The second item, the Highway 78 Water Project, again, this has been a, kind of an ongoing project and it's actually gonna happen now, so we need to adjust the budget, $179,000. And honestly, if this doesn't get paid by the end of September, I'll be asking for a budget amendment. We'll have to roll forward this project into the next year's budget, so I doubt this is the end of these items to come before you. The next item is a sewer review. This was approved at the last meeting as well. Brennan Jones, $23,350. So in this year's budget, we budgeted over $100,000 for Jifa interest in case we had moved forward with some of our million-dollar-plus projects in the Water and Sewer Fund, thinking that we would have a Jifa loan already in place. So I budgeted $100,000 for that interest. That hasn't happened. So I'm proposing that we use some of that money for this. So instead of having to dip into the fund balance for this, we can use the money that was slated for interest for a loan that hasn't happened in this fiscal year for these professional services. And then the last item is the same situation. Brennan Jones, y'all approved this one in May, $33,820. This is surveys for the sewer line. And again, like I said, we had $100,000 in Jifa interest. That's not gonna come to fruition in this budget, so I'm asking to use that for these two projects. Any questions on that?
I have a question. And it's mainly related to the remodel in here because I know we went to contingency for the Punkin Town Road Speed Study. We had money we didn't spend on things. So I think of it like a family. If you go into your contingency or you go into fund balance, let's say fund balance, we took it from fund balance, that's like your savings account. What about the money we didn't spend? We didn't go to convention. We didn't go to training. I bet you there's some other people that didn't go to training. What I'm saying is, is there some reason we're not using the money we didn't spend rather than going to the savings account?
Well, first, this is savings, you're right, fund balance is your savings account, but this is the 2008 SLOSS savings account that's already sitting there. Yes, we've had some cost savings in the general fund, but we've also lost revenue.
Correct.
Recreation, Pine Mountain. So I'm still waiting to see how those will, will offset one another. So yes, we've had expense savings in the general fund, but not quite enough probably to cover the loss in revenue for Recreation, Pine Mountain, and some other places, so.
Yeah, the general fund. I was thinking more of like the government, what we budgeted even for ourselves up here for training, convention, all that. And I know we've talked about, but I've never heard anything about where's that money going? So when I saw something like the remodel city hall, I thought, isn't that like a perfect place to use money like that? Because we do, we benefit from this, so does the courthouse. I was just curious. You know, eventually, I would like us to have that discussion, though. We've probably lost massive amounts in some areas with recreation. I was thinking more of like our account, the government contingency and the money we didn't spend.
Well, some of that contingency that was set aside is being used here in these budget amendments now, but.
Like Punkin Town?
Yeah.
Is it the contingency fund? Is it that under?
It's under the, that's right. It is under the council.
It's under us, so.
I think it was $100,000.
Right, and so why would we use contingency instead, like she said, we were underspending our account for the council? We didn't go to the conference and all that, so there's a lot of money left over. Why should that not pay for this?
Nobody volunteered. Anybody wanna volunteer their travel and training money?
Where are we going? We're not going anywhere.
Well, I'm not using your travel and training money unless you tell me I can.
Well.
I don't see why we need it.
We brought this up, we brought this up a couple months ago. I mean, at least I did. I was talking about, why don't we use that money? But anyway, that's out there.
You wanna offer yours?
Absolutely.
And you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Put it, put it on there.
I'll need another one.
Save the contingency money for later.
Nobody's going to Savannah up here to the convention.
Listen, we'll take a look at it for the next budget amendments. There'll be more coming.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, I'll place these budget amendments on the consent agenda if there are no objections.
No objections.
Okay, let's move on to the resolution to execute grant from Coronavirus Relief Fund.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the CARES Act was passed earlier in the year, and GMA has kind of been a liaison between the state and the cities, giving us the information that we need in order to receive the money that was available to the city. We have been allocated $840,599, $840,599 with 15 cents. They're willing to advance 30% of that to us. Now, unfortunately, the grant can only be used to cover certain items, so they have to be necessary expenditures that were in relation to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. And they have to, they had to have been not accounted for in your budget. So if I had budgeted for a bunch of masks and hand sanitizer, I couldn't request the funds for that, which we didn't, so that is a legitimate expense. They have to be incurred between the period of March 1st through December 30th of 2020. Unfortunately, our bigger losses come from lost revenue. Again, Recreation was closed, Pine Mountain Gold Museum was closed, Court was closed for a little while. I've been showing you the sales tax numbers. They haven't been as negative as we thought, but we do have that other lost revenue. I believe we looked, the Finance Committee met yesterday, I believe it was about $600,000 in lost revenue. But that cannot be used for this CARES Act money. Payroll or benefits, yes, we had to send people home. So we had payroll and benefits that were covering people who were not at work. The government allowed us to have two weeks COVID pay for everybody, so, but none of those things are necessarily covered with this CARES Act money. And it had to be for, if people were working, their payroll could be covered if they were mitigating or responding to the COVID emergency. They did come back and say public safety counts. However, again, it has to be above and beyond what you budgeted for. And so nothing is jumping out to me yet as far as what we could use this for in a big way. Yes, we have bought PPE, we have bought hand sanitizer and soap and all that kind of stuff. One thing that I will be able to apply for is the, we lost the inmate crews, and so we've had to bring on a bunch of temp employees. That has been pretty expensive. But again, only above and beyond what we had already budgeted. So the $50,000 that we would have paid Carroll County for the crew for this period, I'm having to look what was above that. So we are starting to see, we have, we have passed that amount. And, you know, we still have the rest of this year to go. So I believe we will be able to request that money. I don't know if it'll be the full $840,000, but I will keep you updated, so.
Okay, so, and welcome, Mr. Mecklen, back here. And I know you're not here to work, but just, I would just say, I want to make sure that you're reviewing these documents because they sent these to me and they were fairly complicated. And I appreciate that Sarah's gone through it, but it doesn't hurt to have more eyes looking at it. Because if there are ways to get and take advantage of this, these reimbursements, we want to do that, and I've expressed that to you all before. Ever how much we can get, you know, we can certainly use. We don't have excess funds here, so are there any questions for Sarah on this?
This says it received an advanced amount of $252,79. We've already gotten that kind of money?
No. We have to execute this agreement before we can receive any money.
Okay.
And then I have to be able to support the money we receive. So if we don't, if I can't substantiate $252,000, we'll be paying some of it back. But hopefully, we can figure out things that we will qualify for.
We'll take it and then give it back if we have to, okay.
I hope not, yes.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, if there are no, if there are no objections, I'll place this on the consent agenda.
No objection.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah. All right, we have removed I one. Let's move on. Bobby, you asleep? All right, J one, Community Development. Bobby is resting, but I guess it's gonna be Chris. Adoption of the Villarica Zoning Ordinance and Official Zoning Map. It's probably what a lot of people are here for. You're up. You're probably the most popular one.
Yeah, I'm like a repeat performer here. Just to give you an update, we met with the acting city attorney earlier in the week to review the zoning appeals that have been submitted to the city for consideration. We walked Avery through the process that we went through in establishing who would be contacted, how they were contacted, the notifications that we received with objections, and how those objections were addressed specifically with zoning appeal forms and the ones that we received back. So we walked him through that process and then we actually looked at each individual appeal application. And there were only two of the applicants that he indicated that he has some, some concerns over. Since then, he's been, I'm kind of speaking on his behalf here from what I know, has spoken to the legal counsel representing those applicants and has been able to negotiate what we feel is a fair accommodation with respect to the rezoning for David Shoners properties on Mary Lake Boulevard, as well as several properties on the South End of 61, which is Cooe and Shackford. So we have been very diligent about trying to address the appeals that have been submitted. There are still a number of appeals that are waiting to go to the Planning Commission and then back to the City Council for consideration, but other than that, there, I'm not aware of any outstanding issues that would prohibit us from moving forward.
Okay, let me, let me hit a couple things first. Are we doing a public hearing tonight on this?
No.
Okay. And second, the, with regard to the two properties, I have seen some, and you and I have talked, there's a preliminary agreement that we'll get to the council when it's prepared. Is that still substantially the same?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, so we will not do a public hearing tonight, but what you want to do tonight is just take any questions from the council and then we're gonna move this to Tuesday. Is that, am I clear on that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for Chris?
On the, on the motion there, it said motion to adopt the Villarica Zoning Ordinance and motion, so is that two motions or is it motion to adopt the Villarica Zoning Ordinance and adopt the zoning map?
They would, they would be separate motions.
Two motions.
Okay, could you, could you break them up on the cover sheet?
The rest of this verbiage, does it need to be in there or is that just standard that, you know, property owners who have filed would naturally get 60 calendar days or does that have to be in the motion?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
There's additional verbiage in this motion that seems.
Yeah, that was actually in the original cover letter. This is carried over months and months and months, so.
So you need to clean that up as well?
No, this is probably just an acknowledgement of the initiation of the zoning appeals process.
Okay.
You could put that in the impact.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to minimize the motion, but if there's some legal requirement, just make sure Avery that you go through that or David, whoever ends up doing it. But if it's two motions, I'd like you to break them up so that we can have two, if you can do that for us. That's, that's a good point. Any other questions? We have worked on this for months and months and months, and I'm sure that there have been any number of interactions between Chris and interested property owners and council and staff. So this has been beat, you know, pretty good. So it doesn't surprise me that there's not a lot of questions. We thought we might pass this out two months ago, I think, and then we had a situation where we couldn't do that. I have since been in touch with Mr. Mecklen, and we talked earlier this week. He is, he was the reason that I did not want to move forward with it last month. I didn't want to in his absence, and he and I have had a discussion this week. He is comfortable with where we're at. He's comfortable with Avery's work here and with Chris. So I think we are ready to move forward with passing this on Tuesday. Now, on Tuesday, we'll. Now on Tuesday, will we have a public hearing? Will there be a final public hearing?
You had a public hearing at your last meeting.
We did.
You could have another public hearing if you wanted to.
Are we required to?
That would have satisfied the requirement for the public hearing.
I'd recommend it though.
It's not a bad idea to, to do.
Yeah, I think it'd be best.
If you do want to do that, please have that added to the agenda. I want to see it say public hearing on there and I don't mind having a public hearing. Okay, any other questions from council?
Nope.
Okay, with that, we are going to wrap up this very long agenda and I think we did a great job. I apologize for having to leave. I felt like I might have a fever and so I wanted to go and make sure that I did not and I did not, so just so everybody knows, but I.
You're going to review the consent?
Where's Nick? We've got to do something about the air in here. Thank you, Chris. It, it's, I don't know if.
You're going to review the consent agenda items?
Yeah, I will. Let me first take public comments. So if, I hope, hopefully if you wanted to make public comments, you wrote your name down here and if not, when I finish here, I will give an opportunity for additional public comments. Robert Walker, sir, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record and then you have three minutes and I will ask the city clerk to do that timer for me.
Hi, Mayor and Council, my name is Robert Walker. My address is 15 South Public Square in Carterville. I'm an attorney at Jenkins, Bowen, and Walker Law Firm. I'm actually here just to offer myself for any questions that the council may have. We are one of those two property owners, I am representing one of those two groups of property owners who was mentioned by Mr. Montesinos a few moments ago. I've got Joel Morris here, who is a representative of my client as well, so I'm not going to make any comment. I did that last meeting, I just wanted to let you know that I am here if there are any questions that I or Mr. Morris may answer.
All right, we appreciate that, thank you. I'll just remind everyone that it has been our practice not to engage during public comments, so we, we will try not to do that as well. And so please, don't take that as any disrespect, we just don't engage. All right, Mr. Joe, I'm going to mess this up, Garofalo. Come forward, sir, please give us your name and address.
Joseph Garofalo, 252 Marcella Avenue, Sharpsburg, Georgia.
All right.
I came to this good town 2008 during the last crash and I took over the Sports Cafe, which was in bankruptcy. And probably between buying the building and, and improving the building, I probably have 500,000 into that building. So I've been paying taxes here for 12 years gladly. I also own 12 other places throughout the state of Georgia, ice cream shops, candy shops, restaurants, et cetera. So I am the canary in the coal mine in trying to keep America employed and going and I'm representing my good friend Russ, who took over the business from me. So, so when I took over that Sports Cafe, she was originally in the spot now where the water and hole is. So probably for 15-plus years, that business has been a smoking establishment. And that's the clientele that we had, that's how we built the business. So now in the worst economy, COVID, the biggest contraction since 1929, last quarter, 36%, 40 million people out of work, I'm probably be closing three businesses and probably taking a substantial loss and I'm doing everything I can to keep, you know, people employed. So if the only thing I want to ask the council member is, you know, here's a, I'm a libertarian. I, like our esteemed council member on the end, don't smoke, drink, or even eat meat, but I serve all three of my places because it's not up to me to decide what people should do that's legal. So this business has been built on being a smoking establishment. Two other things that weren't mentioned in this, in the smoking ordinance was that, the one thing that's odd, which I like you guys to take a look at the ordinance because it's also bizarre to me, if it's for public health, that ordinance on the books has a, you're allowed to have a patio outside your building that has to be half the size of your space, of which 40% can be for smoking. So I'm saying, I said, wait a second, we're running a place that it's 21 and up, no, no problems, and in that law, someone can have a patio, I could be there with my family and someone next to me could be smoking. So I mean, you know, it's, the whole thing makes no sense to me. You know, the other thing that I think wasn't mentioned in fairness is that somebody else complained to the town that they're at an unfair advantage because we have smoking. And what I'm seeing in other towns, which is sort of sad, I'm seeing like everyone's, you know, the stress in America is probably at an all-time high. People are doing things that they wouldn't do, I see a lot of fighting, people, we have no trust in government, probably starting with Washington down, and I'm seeing a lot of people cannibalizing other people's businesses, like doing anything they can to survive. So there was a very famous experiment done with, with three rats in a cage. The rats had so much anxiety at one point for not being fed or being fed at odd times that the rats did two things, they rolled over and died or the rats attacked each other. And that's what I'm seeing in America. And I'd like to believe that the local government would stand behind the small business guy because we, the small business guy and the middle class is the backbone of America. And I think, you know, to be bluntly, I think everything's been papered over. We've printed $4 trillion. It took from George Washington to Reagan to get to 2 trillion, 200 years, and we've printed 4 trillion. So you're talking about your CARE Act, well, that's money printed out of thin air. Locally, you can't print money. We can't print money at the state and local level. So if the tax base goes down.
Time's up, okay.
Listen, all's I'm hoping is that we can return to what we had, smoking at our establishments.
All right, thank you. Do we not have the, the volume timer? Okay, because I, normally I can hear it beeping. We're going to have to, we're going to have to get a better system for that. All right, next up, Russ Phillips. I'm going to have one up here.
Thank you. My name is Russ Phillips. I live at 111 South Candler Street in Villarica. I'm the owner of the Cinema Tavern. I've been a lifelong conservative and I live, emulate, and follow its core values. Today, I'm hoping to see our system work and see the majority of this esteemed council, where I live, work, pay taxes, pay employees, and have recently built a new home to support reasoned justice and most of all, personal freedoms of American citizens. To vote to rightfully, let me see, to reinstate tobacco use for 21-year-olds and up in my place of business, as the ordinance as it stands right now is, is truly encumber, encum, encumbers my business in a negative way. This has been the worst stretch we all know in modern history with the epidemic and the depression, you know, the, the economy down so much and countless people out of work and running out of unemployment and they're saying a third of the Americans behind on rent and mortgage, okay, riots, protests, every major city, greatest period of uncertainty that we've ever had. We can argue about Washington DC or Georgia, but locally right here, we have to work is where we can make a difference. I've lived and have supported Villarica for 10 years, built this business with sweat and toil, lived in an efficiency apartment for 10 years, and finally bought a home here now I call it home. Now, after having a 20-plus year, well-established tobacco-friendly establishment that I bought 10 years ago where suddenly my business is down 25% pre, from pre-COVID, my PPP, what little bit I did get is gone, I find myself, I find myself for its and my very survival. How can I or we blame Washington DC or the state for what we have control of right here in Villarica? Between retail apocalypse, small businesses across America closing in record numbers, shouldn't we all be doing something to support every single business in Villarica in every way? Do we want a domino effect where local businesses start to close their doors forever? I'm not asking for any special consideration, only a simple, only a simple amendment to the ordinance. My goal is to protect personal freedoms and choices, to continue to employ as many people as possible, to pay my fair share of taxes, to support my local community and give people a reason to visit downtown Villarica for many years. I'm in favor of, of an amendment to the current code as a current code ordinance makes my business in non-compliance under any circumstances. I will endure undue hardship as it stands as my business is on Montgomery Street, right here in the center of downtown. Please, I expect my local conservative leaders to live up to those values and vote to amend the ordinance to allow local businesses to decide if they want adults only in their place of business. I'm swimming against a tide of what I have little control over and believe the local government can and should work for we the people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I've, I don't have anybody else on the public comment list. Do I have anybody here who would like to give public comments? Okay, if there are no takers, council members, does anyone have anything to add? Tom? Avery? Okay, with that, we will do the consent agenda and then we will adjourn. So here's what I have. Item A4, approval of the final plat for the falls at Mirror Lake Phase 2. Item A5, 2019 to 2020 paving contract award. Item C1, library digital sign replacement. Item D1, 2020 Gold Rush Summer Concert Headlining Entertainment, Velcro Pygmies, Friday, September the 11th, 2020. Then D3, proposal to hire True Green Commercial Services. D5, additional lease agreement between the city of Villarica and Norfolk Southern. F1, emergency replacement of number two Influent Pump Drive at West Plant. F2, emergency replacement of number two West Plant Influent Pump. F3, emergency repair of number three Influent Pump at the West Plant. G1, dual-factor authentication. H1, 2020 budget amendments. H2, resolution to execute grant from coronavirus relief fund. Does anybody have anything different? Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have that consent agenda? All right, with that, we will be adjourned.
What's that? Let me tell you, I was feeling like, and I have a slight headache and I feel like I got a bad, I feel like I got a fever. But they didn't, they took it down there, a couple of times I got 98.1. But here's the thing, I told you about the gout, I don't know if I told you because you weren't here, but I got the gout now and they gave me a prednisone. So I took six pills yesterday, five today, and I think it's just messing with me. I haven't, last night I almost got no sleep.